Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 10, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. We will rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
And will the Director of Community Development, Ben Foo, please do the roll?
Yes, with pleasure, Chairperson Moore. As you can see, we're having a slightly different layout tonight for the public, in case you don't recognize this. This is for our social distancing in the event of these coronavirus. So, we're trying this. This is the first time we're doing it, and I think Councilwoman Chow, you will see this in this layout next week at the City Council meeting as well. So, we practice run for us. With that, I will do the roll call. We have Commissioner Saxina.
Present.
Commissioner Fang.
Present.
Vice Chair Wong.
Here.
Chairperson Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Takashi is absent today. Thank you.
Next, we'll have approval of the draft minutes from February 25, 2020. Recommended action to approve or modify the draft minutes of February 25, 2020. So, take a minute, please, and go over the minutes.
I'll second.
So, we will not be able to vote with our lights, or are we still going to be able to do that?
You won't be able to vote with your lights, so we suggest by a voice vote, if you could just vote, and then we'll confirm the votes for the record.
Okay. So, all in favor, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
So, we approve the minutes for 01, absent.
And Commissioner Takashi is absent, correct. Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Next, we move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. At my discretion, I'm moving that to five minutes this evening because we have a very light audience. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. I do not see any oral communications comment cards. Written communications, we have received... two written communications. And we are moving on to the study session, item two. The subject: Study Session Regarding Common Terms and Documents Related to the SEQA Process. Recommended action to receive the presentation and provide any input to staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. I want to first say welcome to Councilmember Chow. Thank you for joining us today. I failed to acknowledge you when we did our roll call, so thank you for coming. For this particular item, we have members from the City Attorney's Office. I will let them introduce themselves. Commissioner, Chairperson Moore, you may recognize him from previous Environmental Review Committee meetings and training. So, with that, I will hand it over to City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, and good evening, Councilmember Chow. I'm Seth Pettah from the City Attorney's Office. I'm joined here tonight by Carmen Borg, an urban planner from our law office.
Mic, please.
Say again?
Your mic.
Is the mic not on? Apologize. There we go. Okay. I'll start over. For the record, I am Seth Pettah from the City Attorney's Office. I'm joined here tonight by Carmen Borg, an urban planner from our office, Shoot Mahaly Weinberger LLP in San Francisco. The purpose of tonight's study session is to provide a high-level overview lasting about one hour of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. As Chair Moore mentioned, we'll be describing basic terminology, basic documents under the law, describing some common concepts, and taking questions. It probably makes the most sense to reserve questions till the end. We have quite a bit of time, about one hour reserved for questions. We may not need all of that. If questions of an urgent nature come up during the presentation, we'll try to accommodate them and work them in, but we hope not to get too sidetracked just to make sure we finish the presentation. I will mostly turn it over to Carmen for the next hour or so, and I may chime in here or there as we go. And can we turn it over to the presentation now that we're done with the introduction?
Good evening. So, the goals for this evening's presentation, like Seth said, are to go over various types of environmental documents, review triggers for preparation of NEIR, and go over the basics regarding contents and process for the two main types of environmental documents, and then, of course, to respond to your questions. So, the main objectives of SEQA are, first, to provide environmental protection. That means to avoid and minimize significant environmental effects, and then to mitigate any significant effects to the degree feasible. Secondly, it's disclosure, and that's to inform both decision-makers about environmental consequences and to disclose to the public why decisions are being made. And, thirdly, public participation. And further in the presentation, you'll hear about those requirements. So, one of the objectives of SEQA is not to stop projects. People do use SEQA to challenge projects, but the three main objectives are the ones you see listed here. We have several tools to help us interpret SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. First is the statute itself. It sets forth most of the law. And then, we have SEQA regulations and guidelines, which are formal regulations that have to be followed, but they're more user-friendly than the statutory requirements themselves. But they do reflect the statute and established case law.
Sorry for interrupting. Since this will be an hour-long presentation, we don't have a copy of the slide. I wonder if it's possible for staff to make a copy for each of us so that we can refer to it later for this hour-long presentation.
We can certainly do that. I will say that the slides are actually posted online right now, so it's accessible on the Internet from the city's website, but we can certainly make you copies.
That would be great.
So, aside from the SEQA regulations and guidelines, some jurisdictions also have local SEQA guidelines. Most jurisdictions just adopt the SEQA guidelines as their own, but some jurisdictions decide to have guidelines on top of SEQA guidelines. Some of the drawbacks of doing that are that you can run into preemption issues, and also, the SEQA guidelines are updated quite frequently, and so, those jurisdictions that do have their own guidelines have to keep their own guidelines updated to reflect SEQA. There are also court cases. As with all our laws, the courts are the ultimate arbiters of what SEQA means. And finally, there's the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, which is the state planning agency, OPR. They issue technical advisories and other guidance about issues that broadly affect SEQA practitioners. So, when does SEQA apply? The first decision a public agency has to make when they're considering whether SEQA applies is whether the activity that's being proposed qualifies as a project under SEQA. And there's a list of criteria under SEQA to help decide whether it's an actual project or not. If it's not a project, no further actions required under SEQA. If it is a project, then the agency has to determine whether it's ministerial. If there's no discretionary decision, then you don't have to do anything under SEQA, or whether the project is exempt from SEQA. So, if there's no possible significant effect from the activity, or if it's statutorily exempt or categorically exempt, then the lead agency can just file a notice of exemption without doing any further SEQA analysis. If the project isn't exempt under SEQA, then the lead agency has to evaluate the project to determine what the possibility of significant effects is and what the most appropriate SEQA document might be. So, these are the main types of SEQA documents. We've already talked about exemptions a little bit. Then there's the initial study, or IS, which is also known as the SEQA checklist. This is Appendix G to the SEQA guidelines. There are negative declarations and mitigated negative declarations, and then environmental impact reports, and we'll go over each one of these. So, the initial study is a preliminary analysis, and it's prepared to determine whether the project could have a significant effect on the environment. Unlike NEIR, you have to prepare an initial study if you're going to issue a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. And it has to be based on facts, not argument, not speculation, not unsubstantiated opinion, and definitely not on erroneous information. A negative declaration is a written statement that briefly describes the reasons that a proposed project will not have any significant effect on the environment, and no EIR is required. And that's prepared when there's substantial evidence, we'll talk more about what that is, in light of the whole record where the lead agency can declare that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. A mitigated negative declaration is a negative declaration when the initial study does identify potentially significant impacts, but revisions to the project or mitigation measures for the project will reduce those impacts to less-than-significant levels. And when that happens, then the lead agency can say that there's no substantial evidence that the project would result in a significant impact. So, that's prepared, again, when there is the potential for an impact, but revisions to the project or mitigations can reduce it to a less-than-significant level. An environmental impact report is a much more detailed environmental document, and it's prepared when there's substantial evidence that the project may have a significant impact. It provides a lot more detail. All of the conclusions in the EIR, just like with an initial study, have to be based on substantial evidence. In the case of EIRs, that typically means technical studies by experts in the field, and also includes evaluation of alternatives to the project. So, MNDs and initial studies and EIRs are subject to a different standard of review, which makes EIRs more defensible if they are challenged. With an initial study and an MND, the standard is a fair-argument standard, which means whether it can be fairly argued based on substantial evidence that the project could have a significant impact. With an EIR, it's a different test. It's a substantial evidence test, which means that there is relevant information to support a conclusion. And again, the substantial evidence has to be based in fact. So...
Can I jump in here for one second?
Yes, please.
Well, so, just so it's clear to everybody, when we talk about the standard of review, that refers to when a court is reviewing a legal challenge that has been brought against an approval of a project. So, a standard review is what a court applies when they determine the adequacy of the document. So, as Carmen was saying, with a mitigated negative declaration or a negative declaration, the standard of review is called, under SEQA, kind of colloquially, the fair-argument, sorry, the fair-argument standard, whereas the standard, kind of the higher, sort of more protective, I guess, I don't know what word to use there, the higher standard of review, we put it that way in legalese, is the substantial evidence test that is used by courts to determine the adequacy of an EIR.
I think we are all not attorneys here, so it will be helpful if we don't just read the slides with legal terms. If you can provide real cases and what's considered a fair argument or what's considered not, and for EIR, what's considered substantial, what's not. That would be really helpful.
I'll try to give you some examples, okay? So, for the fair-argument standard, for example, any substantial evidence that can be made... oh, we've lost the slides.
Just give it a moment here to reboot.
Here we go.
Okay.
So, under the fair-argument standard, any substantial evidence that's brought forth showing potential effects could be used to challenge a document. So, if you have an initial study, and somebody challenges that study and says, "Here is a piece of evidence, here's some data that we found that show that you're incorrect when you say that that impact is less-than-significant. Here's a piece of evidence that shows it is significant." That is enough to, so it places the burden on the lead agency to provide the evidence, because any piece of evidence that's presented that says, "Here's a fair argument that you're wrong, and there could be an impact," can be used to challenge that document. By contrast, with substantial evidence, the burden is on the challenger to provide the evidence. So, it's not enough, when you have an EIR, it's not enough for a challenger to say that the EIR is insufficient, you didn't get into enough detail. They actually have to provide the substantial evidence. But with an initial study and a mitigated neg-dec, it's much easier, it's a lower standard of review that the courts have to say, "That's right, that initial study should have had more detail in it."
Can you make an example of a real case, something people can argue, or it's very vague to me?
Well, there are legions of cases applying the fair-argument standard versus the substantial evidence test. One comes to mind in the last year or two. I am afraid this is a rather poor example because it's kind of an outlier case, but it took place in the city of Fremont, and I believe the impact area was either traffic or perhaps aesthetics, I believe it was traffic, and there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project, and there were just some public comments had been made that the traffic impacts would be significant, and that the MND had not looked at these. And the court held, in that case, that the public comments were a fair argument based on evidence that had been placed into the record by the commenters by way of their comments that the MND did not take those effects into account. Similarly, there are many, many cases supplying the substantial evidence test to EIRs and finding the EIR adequate, or in some cases, finding the EIR inadequate, in the sense that it, you know, was complete and did provide all of its conclusions based on substantial evidence, or, in the slightly more rare case that an EIR is challenged and undermined or found inadequate, that the conclusions were not backed up by substantial evidence. So, the conclusions that were reached as to the significance of impacts were not actually supported by the evidence in the EIR. But as Carmen pointed out, it's not enough, in that case, for the challenger simply to raise arguments that, "Oh, we would have done that analysis differently." As long as the agency or the preparer of the EIR did it in a way that is supported by the evidence, then that will be upheld by a court.
So, the agency, as long as they have done some traffic study, would have been fine, but they didn't do any study for that Fremont case.
In that, I actually do not have the facts clear enough in my head to recite to you them. I'm happy to provide the case to you. After the meeting, I can find a citation for it. But as I said, one case, you know, is a single case. There are many cases that analyze the fair-argument standard and apply it to all sorts of impact areas.
And it's not as simple as they omitted the study altogether. It may be that they produced a study, but the methodology was not acceptable, or it failed to evaluate all of the impacts, that there was something about the study that was not adequate.
Okay. Oh, I think I forgot to mention one thing. I think one of the public comments was wondering why we are even doing this. This year, I'm assigned to the Environmental Review Committee as one of my council assignments, and since I will be looking at reviewing projects, so I need to know all this so that I would make decisions properly or ask to make sure that we protect the city sufficiently for this kind of cases. And I think John, he might be the alternate on that committee, so that's why we need this training. And I think Planning Commission also sits on that commission, and maybe not this year, maybe next year, some other commissioner, planning commissioners would take turn to sit on that committee, which is why we need these trainings to make sure we understand the law when we make decisions, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. I have a question. So, what happens when you have a mitigated negative declaration, and if you have, someone comes in from the public with an expert that they have retained, and they are challenging an item which is actually in the MND? How does that get resolved?
So, we'll talk a little bit about the process for initial studies and EIRs so that you can see how that plays out. But if an initial study is challenged, and you get comments saying, you know, "This analysis wasn't done properly," then the city has the option of redoing the analysis if the challenger indeed presents evidence that the study was not done properly or omitted some things and isn't adequate, or if, you know, the lead agency and the consultants decide, "No, we did the proper study," then you can keep the study you have and move forward.
Right, thank you.
So, let's look at typical contents and the basic process for the initial study, and then compare that to the EIR. An initial study contains a table of contents and a summary of the project, a detailed project description, a description of the existing environmental setting, thresholds of significance, usually Appendix G or the initial study checklist, a discussion of cumulative impacts, although with an initial study, that analysis is usually pretty abbreviated, and then a discussion of feasible mitigation measures and a mitigation and monitoring program, or MMRP, that documents the mitigation measures imposed. The process is that after publication of the initial study, there's a brief public review period. SEQA requires 20 to 30 days. The city has discretion to allow a longer public review period if they wanted, but that's the minimum. Once the public review period is completed, the lead agency will review the initial study and MND and any public comments that have come in. Unlike with an EIR, the lead agency is not obliged to provide written comments for comments on an initial study and mitigated neg-dec. And so, you don't have to provide written comments, although typically, lead agencies will respond to those comments. Either staff will respond to them in a staff report or present it at a hearing. Then there's approval or disapproval of the project. If the project is approved, then the MND has to be adopted and the MMRP has to be adopted. If the project is approved, the lead agency then has to issue a notice of determination, and that's really important because it starts the statute of limitations and starts the clock ticking to allow challengers to sue.
Okay. So, I'd like to go back to the lead agency review of the initial study, MND, and we saw this with the Environmental Review Committee that we have in Cupertino. According to our Cupertino municipal code, we receive the initial study, and then the ERC makes the determination of whether or not it's going to have a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or if it needs to have an EIR. And, right, and that was the presentation which we received. So, I'm gathering that some cities don't have a committee that makes that determination, and I'm wondering why we're, you know, we're looking at this lead agency review of the initial study, MND, when for us, we would review the initial study in Cupertino at the ERC level and then make that choice if it's going to be an MND. So, I was just wondering about that procedurally, how other cities maybe are doing it.
I think some cities do that at the staff level. And so, what I mean by lead agency review is if, you know, if it may be that the initial study and the public comments on the initial study go straight to the Planning Commission.
Here, the lead agency is the city. That's the term. The term under SEQA refers to the city. Here, the city of Cupertino doesn't refer to the specific bodies within the city, so that we're not making that distinction. And to answer your question about the ERC, staff may have more perspective on this, but this is the only city I've seen an ERC-like body in, so I'm not aware of this being a common occurrence around the state, but I may be corrected.
I will concur. My experience is that I've never actually seen an ERC-type of committee from other cities. Usually, it's within the body of the Planning Commission that makes determinations.
Okay. So, in a way, we have like a second set of eyes, because on the ERC, you've got three city staff members and one city council member and one member from the Planning Commission. So, if anything, we have an extra layer of eyes looking at these SEQA documents, which is good. All right.
Actually, I had a question as well.
Yes.
So, in the more traditional case, is the determination of which path to take, is that normally a staff decision, or is that Planning Commission level decision?
Typically, it's the staff level.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'll add, typically, it is the staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission will make that determination, as opposed to having a committee that comprises both the staff as well as appointed officials or elected officials.
So, in our current process, where or when is a decision made, whether it's MND, MND, or EIR?
So, I'll answer that question, Councilmember. I don't want to focus too much on the ERC tonight, because that, we're kind of getting outside of SEQA as a statewide statute, but I believe your municipal code states that initial study shall be forwarded, is the term used, to the ERC to determine whether a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR should be prepared.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, the contents of an EIR, similarly, it has a table of contents and a summary, a detailed project description, environmental setting, that's the existing setting, thresholds of significance. EIRs also contain an analysis of any growth-inducing impacts, a discussion of cumulative impacts, and then a discussion of mitigation measures and the MMRP, but they also include an alternatives So, with the alternatives analysis, it's unique to EIRs, and necessarily, the SEQA requires that there's a reasonable range of alternatives analyzed, and that there are alternatives that will reduce or avoid the impacts proposed by the project. So, it's not a requirement where, you know, you can just throw in some straw man alternatives and reject them. There's supposed to be alternatives that will actually reduce impacts that have been identified for the project. The process starts with a notice of preparation and scoping for the project, which is a process of collecting comments on the project, both from the public and from responsible agencies, and then that data is used to inform the contents of the EIR. that data is used to inform the contents of the EIR. Once the EIR is published, there's a public review period, which is required to be 30 to 45 days. It's frequently longer, especially for complex projects. The lead agency will then review the EIR and the public comments. And because SEQA requires a written response to all public comments, the published final EIR, or FEIR, includes a response to comments. Then there's approval or disapproval of the project. If it's approved, certification of the EIR and adoption of the MMRP. And again, filing of a notice of determination that starts the statute of limitations.
Excuse me, Carmen. I was wondering if we could actually go back a slide to the contents page?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm curious about the item, growth-inducing impacts?
Okay. Yeah, so growth-inducing impacts are, typically, you see growth-inducing impacts when a project, for example, proposes to put in infrastructure that is more than is needed to serve that project. So you might have water lines or sewer lines that are over capacity for what's needed for that project. And the implication is that if there's more capacity than is needed, it can be used for some other project adjacent to it, excuse me, and that's growth-inducing. Another example would be a project that was going to, well, build roadway infrastructure that has access capacity, or a project that was going to result in the need for a substantial amount of housing. Those are all projects that could be called growth-inducing.
Okay. So what happens if you find that perhaps a new sewage treatment plant would need to be built? Would that fall under growth-inducing impacts, or some other part?
Well, if the project was producing the impact, so, you know, this project is gonna produce so much waste, that it's gonna require a new sewage treatment plant. Is that the example you?
Is that a project, then?
Yes. So that is an indirect impact of the project, and it's growth-inducing, because, well, actually, would that fall under growth-inducing? That's just an indirect impact. Growth-inducing is more that you're building something that will necessitate growth. So either you're building capacity that will facilitate growth, or you're building something where you know you don't have enough housing for it, and so you're gonna necessarily need to build additional housing. Those are the two classic examples.
Excuse me, Carmen. So you're saying that, for example, if something is growth-inducing, like if you might have built too much office space, and you might need to build more housing, or you may have added like more energy capacity somewhere, and you need to actually build, you know?
Typically, sorry.
I think with these specific examples, let's kind of steer clear of these. And I think the idea is that, I mean, I think that the idea is actually evident from the term, right? It's projects that will cause additional growth, either, you know, bring more people to the area, or, you know, similarly, like I thought Carmen's example of, you know, if you build additional traffic infrastructure, it may induce more use of the highways, or if you build an extra runway in an airport, it may cause greater use of that runway. So you have to look at those sort of like next step down the chain impacts.
Well, like transit infrastructure, right, for example? Like, I mean, you build them all, it might actually cause more people to use transit, or build transit might cause people to build them all.
Yeah, these things go both directions, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I mean, I want people to be clear out there, so they know what those might be.
Right. And so the EIR doesn't, again, as Carmen mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, it doesn't sort of, it's not outcome-directed, right? All it's about is disclosing information.
Well, I have a question regarding the mitigation measures. So as you said, the MND would identify, there are significant impacts, but there are mitigation measures to mitigate it. I wonder who is going to implement that mitigation measure, when, and who is going to pay for that? And how will there be accountability that the mitigation measure is carried out as MND requires? How is that done?
That's a perfect segue into my next slide, so thank you. So mitigation measures, I'll start by answering your question. When I mentioned the MMRP, that's the mitigation measure, excuse me, the mitigation monitoring and recording program. That is a document that is produced at the end of this process, when the project has been approved. And it's a document that takes all of the mitigation measures in the initial study, mitigated negdech, or the EIR. And it assigns a timeline for when each mitigation measure will be implemented, and who's responsible for monitoring that that measure is made. So it's a chart, and it says what the impact is, what the mitigation measure is, what department or agency is responsible for monitoring that that measure gets done, and when in the process that measure is implemented. So it could be prior to getting the grading permit, or prior to occupancy. So that there's an accountability document for that. And staff will typically oversee that process and check things off as they're accomplished. So with mitigation measures, they have to be feasible, and there has to be evidence of their feasibility. They can't be deferred, so you can't have a mitigation measure that says, the traffic will, the project will increase traffic, and the applicant will have to do a traffic study before they get their permits. You can't do that. You have to do the study now, and identify the impacts, and then a feasible mitigation to go with them. They have to be fully enforceable, and there has to be an essential nexus between the impact and the mitigation that's being proposed. So it has to be related. And they also have to be roughly proportional. So you can't have a small impact and impose an out-of-scale mitigation measure, just because it would be nice for the city to have something more.
I have a question, going back to the traffic study example. So when would the lead agency be, or should I say whoever they've contracted to do the traffic study, when would that traffic study need to have been performed? So let's say you've got, you know, a fully operational business, it doesn't, it's not like half-closed or anything, it's fully operational. Are they able to use a traffic study that was a few years old, or do they need, would they need to do a traffic study when the notice of preparation goes out? Thank you.
I think what you're asking has to do with what the baseline is for measuring impacts. So SEQA requires that the baseline, so to back up a little bit, SEQA is a measure of the change in conditions from the time that you measure the baseline, from the existing condition, to when the project is fully operational, right? So that's what you're measuring under SEQA, that's what's considered an impact. So your baseline is the existing condition, and typically, that's the existing condition as it's measured when the notice of preparation is prepared. So if, at the time of the notice preparation, traffic conditions are this, and your EIR takes three years to prepare, it depends on whether the traffic conditions have changed significantly. Technically, you can use the existing conditions at the time of the NOP. But if conditions have changed significantly, you would have to explain in an EIR what those changed conditions are, and why it still makes sense to use that traffic study. So the answer, yes, is existing conditions at the time of NOP, but there are some circumstances when that's not been found to be acceptable by the courts.
Okay, so that could, let's say you had maybe a four- to five-year gap, that could open up an agency to litigation, probably. Okay, thank you.
Or if, I think this came, same question came up at the ERC meeting where we presented last August, and there's a whole body of case law, once again, on the correct baseline. And it's not a rigid rule that it is always when the NOP was issued, but if, you know, substantial evidence shows that using the NOP is the baseline would be misleading, it would not show the correct incremental impact, then, you know, an agency can opt to use a different one, either prior or later.
Actually, could I ask, you get the example, if the notice of preparation were filed, and then there was a three-year period of preparing the EIR, if the conditions changed significantly. But of course, the project that was being considered would not have been the cause of that change, because it's being, so would that be, you know, the thing next door? Is that the kind of thing that could cause that significant change, or are there other?
Well, or maybe other projects in the vicinity that have, you know, been processed in the meantime. It could be, you know, if we're talking about biological resources, natural conditions can change over time. Wetland boundaries change over time. Concentrations of traffic and traffic patterns change over time. So it just depends on the particular circumstances.
I just, it's an interesting, I mean, interesting question, because if the traffic pattern changed significantly because of an adjacent project.
Because of an adjacent project?
Yeah, if it were an adjacent project, that would, you know, that should have been anticipated in the ER for that project, right?
That's right. Yeah.
So it makes, it's a challenge, then, to, you know, how do you anticipate what was not?
Well, part of what is evaluated in EIR are cumulative impacts. So cumulative impact takes into consideration a project's impact, together with the impacts of any other cumulative projects that are anticipated to happen, or have been recently approved, or are being planned for. And so it's reasonably foreseeable that those projects would happen. And in that analysis, it's a two-pronged analysis. First, you look at what are the cumulative conditions going to look like? What are the impacts under those conditions? And secondly, what is this project's contribution to that condition? Is it cumulatively considerable? So yes, every EIR should be doing that analysis. An initial study and MND should be doing that analysis as well, although usually to a lesser level of detail.
I think, one more way to answer your question, and maybe I'm off-base here, is that the EIR does not look at the baseline conditions at the environmental setting, the project site, at the NOP time, and then look at that, those conditions, three years in the future, or whenever the project will be built. It looks at the actual effects of the project. So you don't normally have to net out the non-project-specific impacts, if that's what you're getting at. You're just looking at the project impacts three years, or five years, or 10 years out, whenever it's been built.
So I agree. I mean, I understand the intent.
Okay.
But I think that the issue would be that if, the thing that sounded like it would invalidate that were the traffic, you know, the background level of traffic while you were doing the study, became higher somehow, right? And that it had to become higher in some way.
So that's partly addressed by the cumulative impact study, and it's also addressed by this other issue that Chair Moore brought up, about certain situations where a different baseline may be appropriate. So if you're looking at a really long-term planning project, like a four-year RTP, or some regional transportation plan, and you're finding, look, this baseline that we were planning and using is going to be really irrelevant in a few years, you might have substantial evidence that you should use something different, that would help discount those additional traffic impacts.
It just seems like it would be hard to anticipate, yeah.
I have a really high-level question. So let's say an EIR has been certified. Well, two things. How much time do any members of the public have to challenge the EIR? And then, how long is a certified EIR good for?
Usually, the statute of limitations is 30 days, correct? So they have 30 days to sue you. How long is an EIR fresh? That is a good question.
Especially if there's changing conditions, right?
Yeah.
That's, you know, a whole area that comes up under what's called a subsequent EIR, or supplemental EIR, or an addendum. There's all types of SEQA documents that may be prepared, but don't necessarily have to. It's up to the lead agency to make that determination under the law. If, after a certain number of years of a project operating under an existing EIR, changes in conditions arise, or changes of the project arise such that a new EIR is required. But that is a determination that follows, you know, certain sort of ABC factors under the SEQA guidelines that are applied, and, you know, the determination is made whether you proceed under one of those documents, or whether you don't.
So for initial study, it also needs to do cumulative analysis, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it wasn't mentioned earlier. And then, yeah, to Chair Moore's question about the how long is the EIR good for, I think, a lot of times, our approval might last 10 years. And then, that means the project could be built in the eighth year, ninth year, or 10th year. Then the mitigations that were identified in the EIR or MND, they may or may not be good anymore, right? So how would that be taken into account? They won't actually need to implement any mitigation measure until several years later, right?
How would you update that, yeah, if you're in that kind of scenario, where they waited eight years to build something?
We don't see this kind of situation a lot, and I actually think this has, so SEQA doesn't say much about this, actually. I think this has to do with the city's procedure in what it requires under its code, and its processing guidelines about approving projects, and within one amount of time, they actually have to be built. I'm not aware of any sort of automatic deadline under SEQA by which an EIR expires. I don't think that's a thing. But again, one could argue.
Maybe not expires, but maybe reevaluate the mitigation measures, update the mitigation measures. Because maybe, right now, we need to mitigate this traffic light, but five years later, it's the other traffic light that is the contribution, needs mitigation. So have, you mentioned that some cities do have their own SEQA regulation. Do you, are you aware of any people that might ask for an update of mitigation measures?
I've not seen this situation come up before. So I think it would have to be, like Seth said, a local regulation that says something to the effect of if a project isn't built within a certain amount of time, that the city has to review conditions to make sure that nothing has changed. And I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that's handled. We would have to look into that.
So Carmen, to Commissioner Chow's point there, then, there probably is a process that we would have to do. You'd have to pass an ordinance to request something like that, correct?
I would think so.
Commissioners, I would say that in general, as long as the EIR still retains some informational value to the project, then the EIR is still valid. However, for us as an agency, we typically contract out for consultants to review environmental-related, SEQA-related documents. So we would rely on that communication with a specialist to advise us whether that old EIR will still retain some informational value or not. If not, we obviously will have to update that EIR for the new project. If so, then that would still apply.
So while we're in this territory, can you speak to, you know, development agreement with typically vest rights? You know, an EIR might identify different mitigation, which would normally be something that you would be, you know, the development agreement would protect you from that. I'm just curious, if you wanted to comment on, you know, a different level of mitigations?
Speaking for myself, this will have to be something I follow up with you on. I'm not prepared to answer on the spot, the interplay between DAs and, yeah. Yeah.
I have one more question regarding the alternative analysis. So you mentioned that, okay, the, we will have a notice of preparation, and there is a scoping of the project. So it's a description of here is what the project is. And you mentioned that alternatives should be alternatives that would mitigate the impact of the project.
That's right.
But I have seen some EIRs where the alternatives actually increase the density or the, or the impact of the project.
Those are not very good alternatives, under SEQA.
So, under SEQUAs, alternatives are supposed to mitigate...
They're supposed to either...
The impact of the initial project.
Yes. So you're supposed to either avoid the impact that was, so...
Mm-hmm.
It's, they're supposed to mitigate, or reduce, or avoid impacts that were found to be significant in the EIR. So a good EIR, if, if the project had some significant and unavoidable impacts, so impacts that were not mitigable, they should identify alternatives that would reduce those impacts that were identified as significant and unavoidable.
Especially the ones that's unavoidable.
Yes.
While still trying to achieve the project objectives, I think is the other part of that, yeah.
But before you even do the EIR, how do you know which impact might be unavoidable? It seems alternatives have to be determined very early.
Well, typically, the alternatives that are described in notice of preparation are broad concepts. So if you know that you're proposing a very large project, typically you'll have an alternative that's a reduced version of the project. If you know that you're proposing a project that requires a general plan amendment, typically an alternative would be a project that doesn't require a general plan amendment, and that's consistent with the general plan and zoning for that site. Does that make sense? So you don't know the details of what that alternative would be, or how it's going to play out. But at the NOP stage, you, you can anticipate that, oh, well, we're asking for a general plan amendment, so we should look at one that doesn't require that. Where, you know, it's a large project, so we should look at a reduced project to see how, how that's going to, you know, relate. And then as the process goes along, you might have to reject some of the alternatives that you considered because they don't pan out, they're not feasible, or they don't really reduce the impacts. You might have to come up with other alternatives. Does that make sense? So it's, it's an iterative process where...
So it's iterative, the alternatives are iterative process?
They, they have to be, because they have to be responsive to the analysis. They're informed by the analysis.
So you start with some alternatives in the beginning, and then determine some unavoidable impact.
Yeah. And as planners, you know, you can anticipate what some of the big impacts might be just with the basic information about the project. If a project is proposed in the middle of a biological, you know, an area that has a lot of important biological resources, you already know that there's probably going to be some significant impacts because you're going to remove a bunch of trees, and it's going to impact a bunch of wetlands. So we better think about an alternative that doesn't impact those resources.
But then if you are doing a general plan amendment, your goal is hope to have the amendment. So I, if you're just doing alternative that doesn't need amendment, that doesn't seem to serve the purpose. It seems makes sense to have alternatives that's more middle ground, that may reduce the impact by still providing some amendment to the general plan, but reducing the project impact. Wouldn't that make more sense? Because your goal is to amend the general plan.
Well, the, typically, an EIR and an initial study, there's objectives that come with the project, right? So you identify the objectives of the project. It might be to build a car wash, or whatever, whatever it is that, that the applicant proposes to build. The fact that that project requires a general plan amendment is, it's necessary to build that project, but that's not the only project that could be achieved there. So it's, it's a balance between identifying what are the objectives of the project, and then what else could be accomplished, that, what else could be considered that would accomplish most of the project objectives, if not all of them.
Oh, so...
You know, the objective is never going to be just to get a general plan amendment. There's objectives to...
So the objectives should be specified in the NOP? Or where would that be specified?
The objectives are part of the EIR. Well, that's a combination of, I mean, it's usually from the applicant. What are the applicant's objectives? And they're, they are summarized in the summary of the EIR, and then in the project description.
And they are not described in the NOP or the scoping? Because that's the, that's documents, that's the first public document, right?
Yep. Usually the NOP is like a one or two-page description, very high-level. And it's like an excerpt of the project, what will ultimately become the project description. And I've seen objectives listed there. They may not be complete.
But I mean, if we, if, if NOP or the scoping initially doesn't list the objectives, how would the public be able to comment on that?
Well, they can comment on how the project has been described, right?
But if they, if, if we don't even know the objectives of the applicant, that they are going to build a car wash, how could we even comment?
You would know that, because the description of the project would say to build a 4,000-square-foot building that would function as a car wash. It would have, it would be located here, there's a map of where it's located. It's just an abbreviated description.
So the objectives should be described in this initial document in some form?
In some form.
Even though not very detailed?
That's right.
Okay. And could the people change their objectives in the middle of an EIR process and decide, no, we don't want to do a car wash anymore?
Well, then it's a different project, so you have to start over in the process.
Then do they need to, they need to restart the process, do another EIR?
If it's a completely different project, yes.
Then how would that be determined? Who would be deciding that?
Well, I think staff would have to decide, oh, this isn't the same project that we scoped, or it's not, you know, I mean, if they're...
So in the middle, we can compare with the NOP and the scoping?
Right.
And say, okay, this is not what we scoped.
Right.
And we need to restart.
You do see sometimes where a project is proposed, and then it's revised, but it's made smaller in the process. And that's okay, because what you noticed, and what you scoped, was a broader concept.
It's still within the scope.
Right.
But if they want to go beyond the scope, they should restart the process and do another scoping, and NOP, public notice.
But keep, keep in mind, there's a, there's a comment period after the NOP issues. And like we said, the NOP is a very brief document. There's not much to say about an NOP, except what you would like to see in the EIR. Then the EIR is circulated, and there's a statutory comment period after that. So you'd have an opportunity to comment after that as well. And then after the comments are in, the agency responds to the comments. So there are opportunities to insert, you know, points of view into the process after the notice of preparation.
Then another question is about public comments. You mentioned that for the MND, or, I think there are two public review periods, right? One is after NOP and scoping.
That's just for an EIR.
And then there is one that after the EIR or MND is done? Are there...
Right. So, so with an MND, you just have one public comment period, and it's after the initial study has been published. With an EIR, you have the notice of preparation and the scoping period. And then you produce an EIR, or a draft EIR, and people can comment on that.
Okay.
And then you produce a final EIR, and people can comment on that. But at the final EIR stage, the lead agency is not required to provide responses to those comments.
Oh, okay. So with MND, there is only one public comment period? And you mentioned that people can comment either in written form or orally? And are we are required to respond?
Not for the MND.
Not for MND. So for that comment, the agency is not required to respond to the comment. But hopefully, we will include all the issues mentioned, so that we won't be challenged later.
That's right.
Now, if someone did not submit a comment, say, the traffic should be considered, and we didn't consider traffic in the MND, could they still challenge us later?
No.
So no?
They're limited to, well, the, you have to comment in the administrative process in order to be able to raise those issues in litigation.
So even though those comments, we won't provide any response? But those comments are important, because they need to raise any issue they, they want to raise. Otherwise, they cannot raise it later.
That's right.
Oh. And for the EIR, you said there are three periods, right? So the period that's after the, I think, the NOP, that one also, we don't need to respond to the comment, right?
They, they do. All, every, with the, the EIR, so with either of these documents, any of the documents produced during the process are called part of the administrative record. They form the administrative record for that project. So with an EIR, any comments on the NOP, any comments on the draft EIR, any comments on the final EIR, and any comments related to staff reports or anything that happens during that time period are considered part of the administrative record.
And for that, we are required to provide response, no? So which part we need to respond, which part we are not?
Well, the comments on the NOP will, are, you don't provide responses to each comment, but you take those comments and you, you incorporate them into the EIR. So that's how you are responding to those concerns. If somebody says, we think there's archaeological resources under that site, then you make sure to include an analysis of those resources, and that's how you respond. In the DEIR, you're required to provide written comments, point by point.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
Right. But for the final EIR, you're not required to respond in any way.
Oh, okay.
Except that, as decision-makers, of course. You are incorporating those concerns into your review.
And for anyone to challenge the city's EIR certification, they do have to bring up all the issues before the, for the first to come in period?
Well, they don't personally have to bring up the issues, but the issues have to have been raised in the administrative record. So if, if the issue of water quality was raised in the scoping period, but not in the other two places, you can, and, and the comments that were raised were never addressed, then somebody could challenge on that point.
Excuse me, Carmen. So it doesn't matter who raised the issue?
That's right.
So it, somebody else could say, you know, I agree with what this person was saying, and we're, we're going to challenge this certification based on those comments.
That's right.
Okay. And then another item which wasn't brought up, but I, but you've been talking around it, is that a project description needs to be accurate, stable, and finite. And I have a question about, you talked about the changing car wash situation. So let's say we had a project, and its alternatives, all requiring a general plan amendment. And a new project is brought in, you know, several months into the process. So you've had a, a draft EIR already came out, and then they're, they decide they want to add a new project. Are you back to square one, or can you bring something else in?
So under SEQA, you have to recirculate an environmental analysis if changes to the project, or, or additions to the EIR result in greater impacts? Or if you add so much new analysis to the EIR that it, it's, you know, it requires a new review period because it's a substantial amount of new information?
But it's your lead agency that's making that determination?
That's right.
If that's a substantial amount, so, and that's subjective?
I don't, I don't have the language in front of me, but there's a specific description of what triggers recirculation. And so as the lead agency, if the EIR, if the final EIR begins to add a lot of new information, the project is changing, there's the potential for new impacts, or you've added several new mitigation measures, you then have to look at, well, do these mitigation measures result in impacts? Because sometimes, if your mitigation measures are on the ground, implementation of on-the-ground changes, the mitigation measures themselves could result in significant impacts. So you have to look at all of that. It's not just, you know, one, one thing in isolation. And you have to decide, are things different enough here that there might be a significant impact? And we need to recirculate the document for a new public review period, and give the public a chance to comment on all these new materials, on all this new mitigation, and on the changes. And in that case, you can recirculate the new information for another 30-day or 45-day period, whatever's required, and move forward from there. So you're not back to square one, but you might have to do some additional work.
So Carmen, as a, as a commissioner, if the agency is supposed to do and trigger the recirculation, does the commission trigger that? Does the department do that? Like, who can initiate that process?
I'm not sure what happens here in Cupertino.
I'm just curious. I mean, is, is it written somewhere in a statute that says it's, it's triggered by the council, triggered by the planning commission, triggered by the, you know, city manager?
No, SEQA talks about the lead agency. So that could, it depends on what your, your staff process is. But, you know, the decision-makers could decide, oh, we think this should be recirculated. Generally, the decision-makers don't make that initial determination, that's made by staff, but...
Right. But at some point, any one of those individuals in the lead agency could raise that as an issue for recirculation, and then that agency has to make its determination how to recirculate if they're to make that decision. Okay. Just want to make sure.
And, and what happens if we disagree with the, whoever's preparing the EIR, that, that we don't agree that the project is accurate, stable, and finite as, as the planning commission? So we're getting a recommendation then from whoever prepared the EIR, but we, we don't think that we could follow along what the project was? Are we able to, you know, as the planning commission, we would, you know, recommend that they do not certify, that the city council does not certify? Is that something we can do?
Well, I would think that that would start earlier in the process, where if you felt like there wasn't enough detail in the project description, that when the project was initially presented to the decision-making body, you would say, well, you know, this is really isn't enough information for me to understand what's going to be happening, and I would like more detail. And so before it got to the point of approval, you would have an opportunity, as the decision-making body, to require more detail.
Okay. So I'm, I'm thinking more in terms of if you had a project where they were just kind of looking at the, the envelope of it. And, you know, you had some information about how, how large the project, how tall it might be, the, the bulk of it, that sort of thing. But internal to the project, you have no idea if you're going to end up with an office park or a housing project, say, something like that. And so the, the project comes to the planning commission, you have no idea what the project is, in your minds. You know, the, the, the EIR might say, well, we're telling you it's going to be this tall and this big, but it could have this variety of, of items in it. So is that...
Once again, it's up to the, the decision-makers as a, as a group, as a whole, whether they think the EIR, including the description of the project, is adequate, or if they want to see more detail in it. I, you know, I think, I mean, the answer is the same, no matter what the hypothetical is. I mean, it's what the law says, what the state law says. And it doesn't get into the level of what staff did, what the planning commission does, what the council does, the lead agency. So, yeah.
Okay. And so I know we're not supposed to be getting into any case law, but, you know, I was looking at the Stop the, Stop the Millennium versus the City of Los Angeles case from last year, which is talking about having, not having an accurate, stable, and, and finite project description. And, and there were some other ones where that became an issue. So there is some recent case law regarding the project description, which I... So there is some recent case law regarding, um, the project description, which I think is important. Um, and I do, you know, I have another question, uh, going back to the topic of tiering. Um, so if you had, I'd like to understand the topic better. I'd like to understand the topic better because we have a, you know, a general plan EIR, and then we have projects which would be based off of that. And the question I have is if you can have a project which is, um, essentially larger than what was studied in the general plan EIR, if that would still count as tiering? Or does it need to stay within the envelope of what was in that EIR?
Um, I don't have a complete answer for you. Uh, off the top of my head, I believe that in order for there to be tiering off of general plan EIR, it has to be consistent with the general plan and consistent with what's been analyzed in the general plan EIR. If it isn't, you probably need some additional environmental review.
And it doesn't have to be less of a footprint, either? Is that a test?
She just described it being more, so...
I think that if it was to be consistent with the general plan, then those, those items, those allocations in the general plan would have been studied.
The general plan isn't gonna talk about specific footprints for projects, but it's gonna talk about densities, does it? Okay.
Oh, no, 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 you're right, you're correct. What you're saying is correct, that's what I'm saying.
So it's gonna talk about densities, it's gonna talk about, you know, larger concepts.
Sorry, I missed something. What do you mean by tiering?
Yeah, we hadn't actually covered that in the presentation yet. I'm not sure we have put it in here, but we can try to cover it as we go on. I'd actually suggest we continue with the presentation.
Okay, and cover it at the end.
And save some more questions for the end, thanks.
Okay.
So you'll talk about tiering later?
Yeah, we can cover that.
I had a question on this slide on cumulative impacts. Is that formally defined? Because accumulative can recurce, like, you know, you build A, leads to B, can lead to C. So are there, uh, objective standards on how the cumulative, uh, impacts are calculated?
There's a specific, there's specific guidance on how they're calculated, and typically, um, you look at the proposed project, plus any projects that have been recently approved are currently in the pipeline or are currently being planned for, so that they're reasonably foreseeable. So, so it's anything, you know, and there's not a specific definition of what recently approved means, so I can't tell you approved in the past three months or approved in the past. But if, if a project has been approved but not constructed, it should be included in the cumulative analysis, basically. Because if it's already been constructed, it would be captured as part of the baseline conditions. But if it's been approved but not constructed yet, the impacts of that project aren't showing up in the real world yet.
So anything which is in process would be?
That's right. And then anything that's reasonably foreseeable, like if there's a infrastructure that's in the process of being constructed, and so you know that conditions are going to change because of that project, or, um, anything else that, that is reasonably foreseeable because it's being planned and has been funded, for example, but not implemented yet.
So you mentioned thresholds of significance for the EIR. I've seen EIR declare a lot of things significant and unavoidable. So that's what you mean by how could, uh, how, how is the threshold determined that when an impact is significant or significant but unavoidable, um?
So lead agencies have the, um, can, can create their own significance criteria. However, most, most jurisdictions use the initial study checklist, which is Appendix G to the CEQA guidelines, and that provides, uh, some guidance as to what is considered significant. With certain things, like air quality, for example, the regional air districts have thresholds of significance for what level of emissions are considered significant. With impacts related to traffic, uh, there's some state, you know, there's some state guidance that is gonna be available for vehicle miles traveled. Um, there's frequently local standards or even regional transportation agency standards that indicate what is a, a significant impact. Um, and then some of them are kind of, uh, subjective, you know? Like, what is a significant impact when it comes to a change in aesthetics or a change in, you know, visual character of an area? Gets a little bit more subjective, but...
Great, so have you covered this slide yet? The pitfall falls.
No, we haven't talked about this yet.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, may I mention something about, with the, with regards to thresholds of significance? I think it might be something we're gonna want to circle back to in some o- other sessions because of the vehicle miles traveled issue and having our own threshold of significance we might want to have just for Cupertino. And also, the, we do mention level of service in our general plan at this point, and it's my understanding that because we have it mentioned, that until we get into our own threshold of significance for VMT, um, that we're still going to be, at least in the appendices of an EIR, providing level of service analysis, even though we, um, the significance of that will probably not need to be addressed. Um, that's one item. And then with regards to aesthetics, which is a pretty subjective area, so there, are you aware of any cities which have, um, thresholds of significance regarding aesthetics? I think that's kind of an interesting topic. And then there's the one other question, um, or more of a comment, is with regards to the air quality, uh, standards. So we have thresholds that were provided by Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And, um, if those are exceeded, uh, it's my understanding that now you need to show a correlation of those standards being exceeded to actual health effects.
That's right.
And then, um, I think this will probably get into our density bonus law discussion that we're having a joint study session with city council, is whether or not those health impacts, um, would qualify for, as a disqualifier for a project being able to use density bonus law. So that's a question that I'm kind of throwing out there that I'd like to see addressed when we, when we get into density bonus law discussion. But going back to aesthetics, I was wondering if you know of any other cities that are doing that?
I know that, um, cities have design standards, and then they also have, um, a lot of times, general plan policies that talk about preserving visual character or neighborhood character. Um, I don't know that they're thresholds of significance, though. It's just guidance, right? So, eh, yeah, so it's still subjective.
Right, okay, and that's, and you understand that issue, okay. And then I have another question. If a significant housing law is passed, which could, um, allow for a large amount of growth, how could that possibly be accounted for, um, in an EIR? When you could have, you know, multiple project sites, um, developed at a much larger, um, rate and, and size than one that was studied in the, in the EIR for the general plan? But, you know, how would you, how could they possibly address that in an EIR accurately? Um, you know, with regards to sewer or, you know, when, because you're looking at cumulative impacts, and say, one of these housing laws maybe sunsets in 2025, can we require even, uh, that an EIR address what could possibly happen or not?
So I'm a little confused by your, your question. Are you talking about there's a proposed project and they have to produce an EIR? And how are they supposed to evaluate cumulative projects when there may be development that it hasn't been evaluated in the general plan?
Right, so it wouldn't, so if you, if we had, take one of these new housing laws, and let's say that something comes through the pipeline which would allow, you know, buildings and residential areas to be seventy-five feet, and, you know, everything is increasing at about that, about that level across the entire city, um, and, you know, how would, how would an EIR even address that?
So, so an EIR, like I said, is supposed to look at existing conditions on the ground on the day that you start looking at your project and measure what that project's impacts are going to be to that existing environment. So, so that's the extent of that, right? And in terms of cumulative impacts, you're also starting from existing conditions on the ground. Now, if something happens while you're producing the EIR, like we were talking about before, to where those existing conditions change, it kind of depends on how much of a changed condition it is as to whether you make adjustments to that baseline. So if things separate from the project are happening in the city that change the baseline, then you have to consider as a lead agency whether the conditions have changed enough to where you need to reconsider the baseline. But if not, then you just look at the cumulative impacts of what's being approved, or what's being constructed, or what's coming down the pike, and what's being proposed with this project, and evaluate what's happening.
Okay, so you're gonna treat these other projects, um, perhaps you'd need to pull together all the permit applications that use the new laws and, and then pile that into, into the, um, the EIR at that point? Okay, sounds complicated, all right.
It is. So, back to our presentation, we were talking about mitigation measures, and then...
Maybe one question before we get to pitfalls?
Yes.
So the monitoring and reporting, so I haven't really heard that discussed, and to what degree, I don't wanna read more into it, but I wanna know what's there. So monitoring and reporting, so at the end of a project, you, you're monitoring it for what period of time? Is it a one-time measurement? Is it multiple measurements?
No, it's mon, it's monitored throughout, um, throughout the construction of the project. So the mitigation monitoring and reporting program is the mechanism for implementing the mitigation measures that the lead, lead agency has imposed on the project. So at, when the project is approved, you have an EIR with a bunch of mitigation measures in it, say, "You shall do this and you will do that." And you put all of that, you memorialize that into a table that assigns then who is responsible for monitoring that activity and when that monitoring will happen, and when, when the mitigation has to be completed by. And so let's say, for example, that the mitigation is, um, get permits from CDFW, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, for impacting this riparian area. When do you do that? Well, you have to get the permits from that agency, and you have to do that before usually a grading permit is, is issued. So there will be so, a staff person or a department identified that will have to check to make sure that that permit was acquired. And then once they can check that off, they can move forward with whatever permits are being issued.
So that's where I'm trying to understand, you know, what is, um, eh, uh, what is intended? So is there anything about, uh, monitoring at the end to determine the effectiveness, you know, to hopefully ensure integrity on future ones? I mean, you know, okay, we're gonna make this, this change here, that change there, and what you're describing is making sure those changes were made. But in terms of monitoring, did it in fact do what was intended? Or were the assumptions or the, um, calculations not correct, which would then be important for us to know going forward? And then the other question while, while I'm, uh, speaking, and that is the reporting. So what are the requirements for the reporting so that, um, the residents, in fact, uh, know what's going on, uh, what's, what did or didn't get completed? And so what requirements are there for that? So the other one's more important, though, the...
As far, as far as I'm aware, and help me out if you, if you know different stuff, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program is strictly a tool for ensuring that what was spelled out in the approvals actually happened. And there's no requirement under CEQA to more broadly report to the public on the results or to monitor the project post-implementation. So if, you know, if the city, uh, wanted to monitor that project to collect data, that's a separate process, but it's not required by CEQA.
CEQA kinda ends with the project approval and then any challenge that might be filed in the court after that, but it doesn't kind of look farther out a, as, as you're describing, council member.
Okay, so, but the city can adopt some measures to monitor and measure the effectiveness of the mitigation measures, right?
And they can collect that data.
Do you know of any cities who do such things, so we can look at how they do it?
I mean, if, you know, if the city is concerned about, it depends on what the issue is that you're concerned about. If the city's concerned about increasing traffic in the city, then I'm sure that there's ways to hire a consultant that can, you know, put down traffic counters and measure where the traffic is increasing and by how much. Trying to think of another good example. That's an easy example, because you can, you can measure it very easily.
Can we use a concrete, more concrete example, maybe Apple Park or Main Street? What we have done in terms of monitoring and reporting for the mitigation measures that's mentioned in there, the EIR, so that we can understand the process better?
Um, council member Chow, with regards to...
Ben can speak on that.
With, with regards to the, the, uh, EIR for Apple Park, they did have a TDM. So there should be monitoring that it's going to the city. And right, Ben, can you speak to that?
I think they have also, like, uh, two-eighty interchange, a lot of things that's included in Apple Park, right?
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of, a lot of these items are, that are included for Apple Park and, and any other large projects you can imagine. For, for the items that you're describing, it's such within the public works department. So I'm, uh, I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm not, um, certain what those, those are at the moment, but we can certainly look into that. If you're looking for examples for a previous project, we can provide that.
Yeah, so I understand the process.
Council member Chow, I would suggest that, it sounds like, um, for mitigation monitoring and reporting, um, there doesn't seem to be any enforcement mechanisms, and those are things that, um, the city will have to do on their own. Uh, we, we would have to put those in place with penalties and fines in a DA and enforce it again in, 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 in another area so that, uh, so that there's ongoing monitoring and collection of that data, and that it's funded. Because I, I don't think those things exist today.
Actually, if they do for Apple Park, they have a yearly, uh, annual study of how many, uh, how many vehicles are moving in and out, the number of people that are, uh, the number of cars. It's a car count with a fee in the event that they exceed that. There's another example, uh, the Mountain View, uh, north, north Bay Shore has an extensive program of car monitoring, and that extends, I believe that actually doesn't have an end, end period. It's as long as the, their precise plan is, is in effect there.
But it's, it's of their own cognizance. It's not the city requirement. So another project may or may not do it, I think that's...
Those are, those were parts of, in, in those cases, for the Mountain View precise plan and for Apple Park, those are actually part of the development agreement.
But are there any enforcement options, uh, that are in place? If they fail to actually do a TDM, or they stop doing the TDM? They just pay the fee, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, there's a perfect per-car fee, but they have, you know, every incentive not to. You know, what, what else can you do?
Right, and the city did have something around the thirty percent trip reduction requirement, and they...
Thirty-five percent at Apple Park.
Great, and they also had a shortage of three thousand two hundred and twenty parking spots, which also helped enforce that they would need to do that. And I, I, along the lines of a TDM, is, is it possible, um, that the shuttle bus system um, could be considered a separate project on its own? Or is that just piled into the... Or is that just piled into the traffic EIR? Uh, and I'm referring to Apple Park, and, and I know this is, you know, looking back hindsight's twenty-twenty, but could that have, could somebody have argued that that's a separate project?
Uh, not a separate project, but I think that's a good example of what I was describing, where if you propose a mitigation measure, so in this case, a TDM that includes a shuttle bus, that, that mitigation measure, you'd have to, the EIR would have to analyze whether that mitigation is gonna cause an impact. Right? So, is it, you know, if it's gonna be a hundred shuttle trips a day, or a thousand shuttle trips a day, maybe that would be an impact. But if it's a shuttle that's gonna take cars off the road, and it's just a few trips a day, maybe it's, you know, the EIR would have to analyze that. Okay?
And just one comment is that regarding SEQA is that there is, there is no SEQA police that will come out, you know, you have to go to have litigation if there's a problem with the, the SEQA, the MND, or the EIR. And also, just to reiterate that if an EIR is certified, we're still able to deny the project. We can say that we believe everything is correct within this document, there are significant unavoidable impacts, but it doesn't mean we have to approve the project. We're just saying that the, the EIR, we believe, is done properly. Is that correct?
That's true. That sounds right.
I, I guess, as a technical matter, that's right. I've, I've never seen that done. Usually, you see a, a denial of, you know, the, you, you see the EIR not being certified and the project being denied. Um, I've, I've never seen that kind of split that you're talking about, but it may happen.
Well, as it was described to me, was that you know, you as the, the Planning Commission and the City Council, what's best for your community. So, just because a project comes forward and the analysis of it, analysis of it is correct, doesn't mean that you find that that is something that is in the best interests of the community for reasons that you're going to have to put, you'll, you'll have findings for why, you know, you, you disagree with the project. Is that correct?
So, so I guess technically, like Seth said, that technically that, that is possible. There's no, uh, legal reasons to avoid that. However, if you approve, for example, an EIR, but you deny the project, and the project will come back in a different form, potentially that will require a new EIR because it'll be a different project, right? So, that's why I think what Seth's talking about is rarely do you ever see that happen. I've never seen that happen either, but I think that's technically you could, I've never seen it.
Isn't, isn't that, this is actually, I think, the question you're asking is a different case. In a discretionary approval, one of the things you must do is if you don't, if you don't certify the EIR, then you, that would be a cause not to, to approve the project. But there are still separate causes independent of the EIR.
Yeah, I think, and I, I, to the extent, Chair Moore, your question was, does the city retain the discretion? Ye- yes, and then no one here is saying otherwise. I, I, I think, but your question is also asking, could a city certify an EIR as legally adequate, but deny the project under their discretion to do so? I think the answer is yes, technically, but like I said, I have not seen that happen, because normally, if a city chooses to exercise its discretion and not approve a project, it would probably also find some error in the EIR and say, hey, we don't think this was adequately described, or we don't think, you know, there's any overriding considerations, or any number of things. But it, it could happen. You'd have an unusual situation where you have a certified EIR for a project, and none of the permits issued, um, or, or approved.
Question to Carmen and Seth, if possible. Um, so I think the answer to this might be no, but the, the question has, are there any remedies, uh, under SEQA for litigation to enforce mitigation requirements by either public entity or private right?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Like, if, if, if you're post-fac, I mean, can I ask, I mean, can I basically enforce that post through litigation?
If, if, if an applicant doesn't comply with the, with the mitigations under SEQA?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if they don't, and, for the mitigation requirements, if they're not completed, can I come back and sue or stop a project?
I'm not a, I, I'm, I'm not aware at the moment of a SEQA trigger for, for, for that, a cause of action. But as others have mentioned on this panel tonight, I, I, there may be other recourse the city could take if provisions in its approving agreement, or approvals were not complied with, yeah.
So, so the idea is basically have a really good DA, is the developer agreement?
If, if the project involves a DA, or, yeah.
Yeah, and aside from that, if the mitigation isn't completed, it's usually tied to some, some...
Could be a density bonus, it could be an outcome, a permit.
You know, you can't have your occupancy permit until this mitigation is completed.
So, we can always, you can, we can always enforce through an occupancy permit.
Yeah, I mean...
You, you...
I think we're, we're a little...
You enforce via the development agreement, right? I mean, the, the development agreement calls for the mitigation. I mean, the ones that we've seen call very specifically, these, this list of mitigations must be completed before you...
Right, but a development agreement is totally separate from SEQA.
Yeah.
Right? That's just an agreement the city has. But in terms of SEQA, each of the mitigation measures, you close the loop on it somehow by saying you have to do this...
That's the nexus, right, the action?
Before, before you get your permit. Um, and so, you would hold the permits until everything was done.
So, for most of the projects, we actually won't do, uh, EIR. It will be most likely ND or MND, because most likely they would comply with the general plan, where an EIR is already done on the general plan. So, most likely, we will see, um, a project will, might have MND, but we would need, uh, so this program, MRP pro- program is important to ensure that the mitigations are carried out. So, you tie them, the loop.
Yes, it is important, absolutely. It's an accountability document.
This is a question more for staff, right? Just a question I've always wanted to ask. Can you, can an occupancy permit be revoked once it's been issued? Are there reasons to do that? Like, may, maybe they, they missed something, or something was caught later in inspection? Or once you issue the occupancy permit, it's done? It's one and done? Okay.
Yeah, basically, that's what the occupancy permit is, is, is that where inspectors, engineers have reviewed the permit and, and the construction, and then deem that a project has been built to the safety standards, and therefore you can occupy.
Okay.
So, if there are other sort of land use or zoning code violations, we can go into the enforcement route that is separate from the occupancy permit.
Okay, so that's an enforcement, okay.
I have a quick question. Why is it that the Subdivision Map Act triggers SEQA? So, we're, we're talking about just a project, which doesn't necessarily have a tentative subdivision map or a parcel map. And then you go through the checklist, Appendix G. But there's something within the Subdivision Map Act which is triggering SEQA, and I, and I just don't understand what that is.
Uh, I'm not an expert in the Subdivision Map Act, I have to say. But under SEQA, you, you begin the analysis process in the first step of the approval process. So, if the first step in approving a project is a subdivision, you do it at the very first discretionary approval. So, with a subdivision being the first step, you would start there and do your analysis there.
Thank you.
I mean, it goes back to the definition of a project, I think, was covered in one of Carmen's slides. It's just a discretionary action.
Well, okay, so that brings up the question, because I thought a development agreement was a project under SEQA. And, and I'm also reading along that line that a, that an ordinance even is considered a project now under recent case law.
An ordinance is, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I'm not even sure that was recent. I mean, a, a ordinance is an action that, that may or may not have a, have a, an effect on the environment, and if I, if I think, were thinking about the same, the same case, that I, um, the, the question remains whether the, whether the ordinance will or will not have a reasonably foreseeable impact. So, an ordinance may not be a project under SEQA still, if it doesn't have a reasonably foreseeable impact. But it, it sounds like we're straying from the Subdivision Map Act question, right? Because a, a DA is a different, yeah. So, a- again, it comes back to the definition of a project and discretionary action by the city. An approval of a tentative map is, generally speaking, a discretionary approval.
Okay, so, well, you could, looking at the development agreement, you could, within that development agreement, have something which is a project. You know, for instance, say you agree to, I don't know, have two hundred and fifty free days of, of, you know, say you have a conference room, you have, you're allowing two hundred and fifty free days of use for all of your conference rooms. I mean, someone could argue that you're gonna be generating a great deal of traffic, and that that, that aspect in your agreement, that community benefit that you're providing is, is actually a project, something like that. Or, I mean, it seems like that development agreement then becomes, you know, definitely a project.
Interesting. I don't know the answer to that. We would have to look into that. It's an interesting question. But it would have to be tied to a change in the environment, so... It would have to be tied to, say, an increase in traffic, or part of the development agreement says that they're gonna build a trail somewhere. That's a change in environmental conditions on the ground, so... But I'm not, I'm not sure if that can, if a development agreement could be a project under SEQA.
Yeah, for, for this hypothetical of usage of, uh, convention rooms or something. You know, it seems as though if you were building such a structure, you would be expecting to use it. So, it doesn't really matter who, you know, who's doing it, it seems.
That's true too. That's true too. Okay, so, to wrap up, I made a list of pitfalls just to think about when you're reviewing environmental documents. Incomplete descriptions are not, not unusual. So, certainly, having a complete, stable project description is important. Watch for deferred analysis and mitigation measures that are deferred, where the mitigation measure describes analysis that should have been done now, but it'll be done in the future. Cumulative impacts should take into account recent, current, and future, reasonably foreseeable future projects, and then a reasonable range of alternatives that minimizes or avoids the project's significant impacts. So, that's, that's all I have for you tonight. I hope we've answered most of your questions, but if there's any other questions, please let us know.
Can we, can you show the pitfalls slide?
Yes.
So, by the time that, um, a document lands on the dais, if we find one of these conditions, what should happen?
Well, you would raise it and say, this sounds like deferred mitigation. Can you explain what's going on here? And the consultant should answer to it. And, you know, presumably, as a decision-making body, you would, uh, see the draft EIR. So, at that stage, if you questioned, you know, if you identified deferred analysis or deferred mitigation, it can be corrected in the final EIR. They can change the mitigation measures, or perform additional analysis between the draft EIR and the final EIR. You can, as a decision-making body, you can ask for clarification or additional analysis if it's needed.
I had a, a much more general question about what all topics SEQA covers. So, typically, when we hear about environment reports, we'd look at impact on air and water. Typically, traffic, uh, features a lot into that. Uh, what about stuff like access to green space and other quality-of-life issues which may not directly translate to, like, an environmental metric? But are they also covered in the SEQA?
Yes, so, in terms of access to open space, there is a SEQA checklist item related to recreation. And it specifically asks, you'd think I'd know by this by heart by now. It asks two questions. Would the project increase the use of existing parks or other recreational facilities such that substantial physical deterioration of the facility would occur? And does the project include recreational facilities or require construction or expansion of facilities that might cause an adverse physical effect on the environment? So, to answer your question, yes, it addresses recreational facilities, but no, it doesn't say, um, does every resident have, you know, access to X amount of acres of open space? However, local jurisdictions can have standards related to, things like amount of open space per resident. They can have goals and objectives in their general plan that says, you know, the city strives to have, or shall have, ten acres of recreational facility and open space per resident in the next ten years, or whatever. But not under SEQA.
Thank you. So, like, when you look at quality, so suppose we are building a new complex which increases the use of a park, and that necessitates more parking spaces, because, like, more people are visiting. So, that would be covered under city ordinances, but not under SEQA per se?
No, if you're building a facility...
Well, let's suppose an existing park will have more people using it. It, it still might meet the standards, but you just need more parking spaces, because more people are coming there, there are more residents there. So, like, stuff like that, that would be covered as part of the city's guidelines, but not under SEQA?
Yeah, unless you're saying, well, the city needs to build a new parking lot.
Yeah, I'm, for example.
Right, so, then the city has to evaluate that activity to see if building the new parking lot could have impacts. And does it require permits and discretionary review, probably if it's a city facility?
Uh, would that come under cumulative impacts?
Uh, no, I, I think that something like that, first of all, it may qualify for an exemption if it's, if it fits the criteria. So, if it's maintenance of an existing facility, or a minor expansion of existing, you know, it depends. Are you building five more parking spaces, or are you building fifty parking spaces? Uh, it would have to be evaluated. It's a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
So, just a broader question. So, given the current state of housing bills and the state of ministerial-reviewed projects, and given the, um, takeover that's going on in terms of how decisions are being made in terms of land use, leaving the local area, what, what is the significance of SEQA in the, in the broader picture going forward, when most of these are gonna be exempted?
Well, not, not all projects are gonna qualify for, for that streamlined process, right? And SEQA does include some streamlining provisions as well, which we haven't gotten into this evening, but, um, yeah, it's just, most projects aren't going to fall into the category of being streamlined, so...
But most large projects will.
Housing projects.
Most large housing projects, mixed-use projects are under assault in that kind of area. Because I could take any large piece of land, which is basically any retail facility that's one would consider underused, might get a mixed-use project, kick out all the residents, kick out all the tenants, and, and go out and do a streamlined project, and say, SEQA be damned. I mean, that's what's happening. So, that's what I'm asking, like, is, is there any other impact to protect the environment, or protect some of those issues, given the fact that a lot of these projects are gonna be streamlined? Are there other SEQA alternatives that one can consider to build into the process?
I mean, if they fit the criteria, then they can be built under the legislation.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
So, following the same line, I think, why are we spending so much time and effort and money to go through the SEQA process? Why do we want to, why did this law even was created in the first place? What, what were they trying to achieve? If we didn't have the law, what would have happened? What would have been the cost of not going through the process?
Well, that's a very broad question, but going back to the objectives of SEQA, is to protect the environment first and foremost, to disclose impacts of a project. So, it's so that decision-makers know the implications of their decisions, and so that the public understands what decisions are being made and what the consequences are of those decisions. And so, the public can participate. Without SEQA, you know, lead agencies can make decisions without disclosing information, without the public knowing what's going on. And then, some cases, you know, could have a great deal of damage to the environment that's never mitigated. So, that's the idea behind it.
So, it's really an integral part of our democratic process to improve transparency, disclosure, and accountability in case some impacts were made by certain... in case some impacts were made by certain project. We identify mitigation measures so that, because if it were not mitigated, uh, further down when we have a cumulative impact, it might have permanent damage on environments.
That's right.
So, okay, that...
So, I had a, I had a question, uh, let's see, actually, maybe two comments. One was with regard to, to new streamlining laws. Most of them would not allow you to kick existing residents out. Uh, in fact, that's a preclusion in all of these. Um, another one was that the EIR has costs, but that's normally, under the normal process that we do, that's reimbursed by the, by the applicant. And then I had a question which was, I don't know, it's page seventeen of the document. You don't, I don't, you don't need to actually flip back. There was some discussion about the term "growth-inducing," and you compared that to indirect effect. And I was actually curious if you could talk about indirect effect, and what does that mean?
Sure. So, an indirect effect is, uh, something that happens indirectly, as, as the term says, but let's say, for example, um, help me out here. An example of an indirect effect might be...
I've got one.
Thank you.
I, I do some airport law on the side, but I'm not doing Cupertino stuff. And so an indirect effect of, say, building, um, a new, uh, terminal or new runways is you draw more people to the facility who use the airport, and you therefore have additional, uh, traffic impacts. Or you could have, uh, more flights that occur, so you, as a result of the expansion, so you have more greenhouse gas emissions from those flights. And that's different. For, the direct effect would be the, the, the impact of the new terminal extension on the ground.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Very, very good. That, you know, that was, that was an interesting distinction that was drawn there about, because what I was hearing was that growth-inducing was generally, it sounded like the, the cases that you were discussing, there were cases where people were overbuilding infrastructure for the, you know, maybe it's the unsaid intention for, to, to grow down the line.
Right.
As opposed to, "I did something, and there was growth as a result." Is that, is that a reasonable, um, capsule of the distinction between growth-inducing and indirect effect?
It, it's almost like they're, they're, I see them as like flip sides of the same coin, kind of. It's like, w- one is, the way I was describing with the airport, it's like it, a, an attenuated effect from the actual physical construction. Um, at the same time, that same expansion might draw more people to, might, might attract more people to the airport because of the enhanced facilities. And that would be a growth in- inducing, uh, well, I would call that a growth-inducing effect, actually, as opposed to an impact.
Okay, well, so I mean, the interesting question is, if this were, I'm putting a new runway at the airport,
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, that raises the question then of, was that, was the traffic impact, how was that to be studied in the, in the EIR? Because I think that it's, it almost sounded, I mean, again, my takeaway from the original discussions is that would not be something that would be an EIR factor for evaluation, the, the additional induced traffic.
Because it's too, because the connection is not strong enough?
Is, I, I don't know, is that what you're, I mean, that's the example you...
No, it, it would be studied as an indirect effect, absolutely.
As, as an indirect effect.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, do we have some more comments before we move to the public?
So, um, the, uh, for the pitfalls, I think, uh, I'm just imagining if when we have, um, one of these E- CEQA documents in either City Council Planning Commission or the ERC, in case I found incomplete description, for example. I mean, I understand if I, if it were, um, deferred analysis or deferred mitigation, we could, um, make comment maybe to enhance the, the, the monitor reporting documents program so that that could be improved at that time. However, if we find out the complete, the description was not complete, or the alternatives were not reasonable, or maybe certain alternative should have been considered to reduce the impact, but they were not considered, what we could do at that point?
So, actually, if there was deferred analysis or deferred mitigation, that wouldn't be corrected in the MMRP. That would need to be corrected in the EIR. All of these things would need to be corrected in the environmental analysis if they were, y- you know, if there was incomplete information, or if the information was deferred. So, you get a draft document, and, or, let's say it's a mitigated NECD, an initial study. You get the document, and if you identify problems with it, you can say, "This needs to be revised." And then you issue a revised document. With an EIR, you get a draft EIR. And if these things are inadequate, then they can be fixed in the final EIR.
So then we don't certify the EIR or MND?
Well, or you comment on the draft, and you say, "These, these things appear to be deferred," or "There's not an adequate cumulative impacts analysis." And then the final document makes those corrections.
Then do we still certify the EIR?
If, well...
Or MND?
So if you identify problems with the draft document, and they're corrected in the final document, then you have a revised final document, and you then decide if it's adequate, and then you decide whether to certify it or not. So there's an opportunity for revisions in the EIR.
As I, so usually, I think it's a draft EIR that's on the council agenda. And then a final EIR document will be issued, but it will never be back on the council agenda for approval.
No, it should come back, because you can only certify the final document. You don't certify the draft. So it comes back.
Huh, okay. So then, so the draft, oh, okay. So when it's on the council agenda, it's already a final EIR. And in case, um, so that means when it's on the council agenda, it's a final EIR. If I still find there are these conditions, then what happens? Because I wouldn't, I would not see the document when it was in the draft form, right? Would that be on the council agenda too?
Part of the, uh, I'm not aware of what the, the city's process is on this, but typically, you would see that at the very least as part of the public comment. It's released to the, to everybody.
Yeah, it's released to everybody, but it was n- the draft EIR would not be on the council agenda for approval, right?
Yeah, ju- just the final, yeah, the, just the approval document.
It's just the final that's on the council agenda for approval.
Yeah.
So then, when it's on the council agenda, if I find one of these conditions, then what happens?
So, yeah, because if they only see the final, then there's not an opportunity for revision. Um, so, yeah, you can certainly point out these issues, and if, if you feel like they haven't been addressed adequately, then you can vote not to certify it. Or ask for recirculation of the document with revisions.
Okay, because draft usually, yes, it might be have a public notification, but council members, we usually don't even get notification unless I happen to subscribe to whatever email that is notifying. And so I might not even see it in the draft form until it's final, right?
Right, um, council...
And how about ERC? Would ERC be reviewing the draft? And then be able to comment on this condition before it's final? Or the planning commission?
Planning, planning commission would see it. There would, the approval would come to planning commission before, so that would also be a, a, a copy that's advanced as the final ER, but...
But still final, right?
Well, it would have been, but we had the opportunity to...
The planning commission would still not see the draft form on the dais, right?
Outside of the, outside of the disclosure, you know, the, uh, the, the
Public comment.
Public notice time, right? You could, so you could say there would be as little as four days to review, maybe a thousands of pages of information. However, certainly for any large EIR, those have been released, you know, both to the council and to the planning commission, you know, in advance. And then there, for a project that had a large EIR like this, it would normally have, you know, a month of time before it, before it came to the council.
This is actually a procedural issue that we've been trying to rectify, to get these documents to the members of the ERC in it, well in advance, and to the, um, because the, the ERC is going to see the initial study, which is, it's like a, a light form of an EIR. Um, so it, it has most everything in it. You will have a review of the project. You're gonna have a lot of information about it. So that you're gonna probably be very interested in seeing, if it moves to an EIR, you're gonna be interested in seeing that well in advance of it coming to the city council. And procedurally, we're trying to get staff to send these documents to us in advance, um, because, like Commissioner Feng mentioned, otherwise, we'll get a thousand pages on Thursday to have it read, to make a determination and a recommendation to city council on Tuesday, which is, it's, it, it's a lot of work over a weekend to do. So we're trying to get that to change and get those documents to us faster.
That's great, but it's just getting the documents to us earlier. However, the documents we are getting is still the final EIR. So my question is, for the draft EIR, who, which body in the city will be reviewing and looking for these pitfalls before?
Ben, is that the planning commission?
Before, before the final.
Ben, is that the planning commission who reads the draft?
No, I believe that would be the, the, um, the ERC to be looking at the, the draft EIR. Uh, once you get to planning commission, there's a final EIR.
The final candidate, you know, candidate version, wouldn't go back to ERC, but, you know, I, I think another way, if you wanted to see this, of course, you can always go to staff at any point in the process.
Not that I want to see it. It's not me personally. What I mean, in terms of process. It seems these issues, the pitfalls, should be identified as soon as possible so that we might be able to improve it. Because I don't want it come to the council, and then I have to reject the project and go back, right? I hope to help, um, whoever submitting the project to, um, look for this, um, so that the pitfalls could be addressed much earlier. That means it's during the phase when, um, in the d- draft EIR, so that someone can comment on it. Then maybe these issues can be addressed in the final EIR. But then if no one is looking at the draft EIR, we are not ever going to address this.
I think we can, we can take these comments under, under submission and, and see if there's a process that works for everybody. I will say, though, that there should, in, public comment is public is, is, and notice is notice to everybody, officials and the public combined. So, at the very least, that is opportunity to review the document, but we'll continue to look at the process.
I hope there is a city body that will discuss these issues on, in the draft form, so that we can look for this. And also, people who know about this, the public doesn't even know what to look for. They didn't attend this meeting, right? Which we allow you to attend.
But they knew, there was a, there was a NOP meeting, so people were aware that there was a ER in progress, right? And, and I would also say that, you know, when you get the ER, there are, you know, for some of the bigger ones, and I mean, not even, you know, not even, not even Valco size, but some of the other ones we've gone, there are, there will literally be a hundred pages of comments from, you know, uh, you know, surrounding cities, uh, residents, all sorts of people. So that, there, there clearly was a mechanism where people were able to see that, and those comments were addressed. That happens in stages a number of times, um, you know, that they keep getting added on.
Of course, I have sent those comments also. However, without actually knowing the CEQA process, I wouldn't know these are things that I could look for and trying to get this addressed before the final EIR. As a member of the public, I wouldn't know that. And most of the comments that people sent for EIR, as I have seen that in, the, the comment, the response were, "It's irrelevant. It's irrelevant." Most of the comments were like that. So, public really doesn't know, even if they said, uh, send a lot of comments, they don't have the knowledge to know. That's why I hope there is a city body with expertise to look for these things.
Hey, I was saying, this is why CEQA attorneys exist, so the public hires them to review these documents and, and, and comment on them. Because this is not information that the public is expected to know, for the reason you're saying. It's very complex.
And maybe another possibility would be to add that to the, you know, the dialogue that's in the scoping meeting. This would be an appropriate time to say, "These are the areas, you know, these are areas of comments."
But still, even if it's at the draft EIR stage, let's say we find out, oh, the description was incomplete, which was done in the NOP stage. And/or some alternatives are unreasonable, or alternatives were, uh, feasible alternatives were not evaluated. It's, what do we do then? Does, can we... Um, council member or, what would be the better process?
I, um, we're not prepared tonight to advise the city on what it's, what a better process might be for analyzing these documents, but we'll take all these comments under submission and
Right, and
propose one, yeah.
Or are there...
Councilmember Chow, one of the things that the ERC, so I'm, been the chair of the ERC, one of the things that we've been trying to do is expand the scope of what the ERC can do. And what might be helpful, beneficial, is if these documents, that we're not just simply determining if it's going to, front, looking at the initial study and determining if it's gonna be an MND, a negative declaration, or an EIR, but if we actually have those documents returned to the ERC for review. And what's curious to me is that we had a very large project, um, a couple of years ago, which did return, um, the ER did return to the ERC for review, and they recommended approval of that project. But I have not seen that done consistently. So if that process sometimes happens, perhaps we want it to always happen for these CEQA documents to return to the ERC. And another thing I would like to see is if they, um, find a project categorically exempt, and they send the paperwork to the Santa Clara County Clerk, um, for noticing, it's just sitting in the clerk's, um, noticing area for thirty days, but we in the community don't know that this even happened, because it was all done at staff level. And I would like to also have these categorically exempt documents presented to the public here, so we know that this even happened. Um, we had this occur back in, um, twenty eighteen. There was a notice of exemption, and we never knew about it, so the public couldn't challenge. There's a challenging period for a notice of exemption as well. So if we don't know that this happened, we don't know that a document went to the clerk, there's no way we could challenge what the city staff determined with regards to that.
I just wanna say, this session has been wonderful. I think a lot of people learned a lot of things. I think it's very important for the public to know what options they have, um, how the process works. I think it's also very important, given the fact that, you know, we're just citizens. We're just residents. We're outgunned by big developers, lobbyists, lots of legal forces, people with lots of money who know this process, who do it on a daily basis. So if anybody thought this session wasn't valuable, I, I would say, I, I disagree. I think you guys did a wonderful job, and I really do appreciate that, and I hope we get to the other set of questions. But, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And?
My other question. Sir, you mentioned tiering. I didn't understand.
So your mic's not on?
You mentioned the, the tiering, and I didn't understand the term. Um, so what does that refer to?
Uh, so tiering is a term that refers to, um, when a, a, a subsequent, usually an EIR, refers back to a prior certified EIR for, uh, its analysis. So it relies on either all of or part of that prior EIR's analysis for its analysis. So it might say, let's say there is a, um, a general plan EIR from, you know, five or whatever years ago, and a new project is proposed that is largely consistent with and can rely upon that EIR for the general plan, um, but maybe has some additional components to it that were not analyzed and not reasonably foreseeable when that EIR for the general plan was done. It can tier off the general plan EIR for those aspects that were studied back then, and then it may have to use some additional analysis. So that later EIR was partially tiered off of the previous one.
So we can move to public comments now?
Actually, if I could, if I could just say, when... Actually, if I could, if I could just say one, one more, you know, I, I think that in terms of the understanding the, the draft as it's moving through the process, one of the things that, that we've seen on, I've seen on all the ARs that I've participated in, is that the alternatives, this may be driven by the city manager, the alternatives are something where they take an input from the council in determining, you know, let's look at, you know, let's look at different, you know, different, study different scenarios. So in the development of those, you know, three or four or whatever scenarios, you know, there clearly was some, there was a feedback mechanism that was happening there as well.
Yeah, is that possible? Because I feel like in the past, from what I've observed, the alternatives were decided in a black box. And the public doesn't even know until the draft EIR is published. Maybe there is an iterative process, but it happens not in a public meeting. And I don't think even the council or the planning commission was involved in such process. So is, is it possible for the process to be more transparent in determining what alternatives to consider to mitigate the impact?
We'll take into account all the comments tonight, and then we'll, we'll evaluate it and see what we can come back with, with a better process. I mean, the draft ER is circulated to public, so the public is at least aware of the projects. But we'll, we'll hurt you and then we'll take a look and work on it.
And the public can always recommend additional alternatives in their public comment. That's done all the time. If you say, oh, you didn't look at this alternative, why don't you take a look at this one?
I guess for the attorneys, or the, the, I'm just wondering about what other cities are doing. Are there other cities who have a more, you mentioned other jurisdictions, some jurisdictions have their own SEQA rules. Do they consider maybe a better, more engaged process with like determination of alternatives, or?
They don't, I, I can't point to specific local guidelines that specify how alternatives are done. And, you know, like, like I said, the alternatives are informed by the analysis. So you can take suggestions at the NOP stage for alternatives that can be considered. You can take suggestions from the public and decision makers at the DEIR stage, and include additional alternatives analysis in the FEIR. But other than that, it's a process of developing the analysis and figuring out how to address identified impacts through mitigation measures and alternatives as you're producing the analysis. So it might seem like a black box, because it takes a while to produce, yeah, because it takes a while to produce the analyses. But there is, there is opportunity for comment and part of what?
It feels like a black box, because the public would make a comment in the scoping time. And, but then since we are now required to respond to those comments, so public doesn't know at all whether their proposed alternative is seriously considered, or simply thrown aside, and they wouldn't know until several months later in the ED, in the draft EIR.
They would know in the draft EIR. So what happens is, you know, if, if I'm on a project team and we, we issue an NOP, and suggestions come in for alternatives, like, we'd like to see this built there instead of what's being proposed.
Yeah, but then?
Then that alternative is going to be considered in the EIR. It might be rejected, because it might not be feasible. It might not meet most of the project objectives. It, there might be issues with it, but it has to be considered, because it was commented on. And if it's not, then probably the person that, that proposed it is going to say, you didn't respond to my comments. And that's in the administrative record, so it leaves the lead agency vulnerable for not being responsive.
So, but what I have observed was, okay, the draft EIR had a few alternatives. They are all pretty similar from each other. And other alternatives that's more, would have mitigated more impact were never considered. So I wondered who decides on what alternatives to consider. And at least as a member of a public at the time, I see it as a black box. If something pops out, I don't know who decides. And that, it's even an iterative process, but then who will be involved? It's, it's pretty unknown, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and with that, thank you Carmen and Seth. We're going to move on to public comments, beginning with Johan Newbrand. Hope I pronounced that right. Welcome.
Hi, I'd like to quickly ask about kind of specificity and also the alternatives that are considered. And so to start off with, what specifically, I'm sorry, what specificity is required in a project description? I haven't read enough EIRs in my life, unfortunately. Is it enough to say, for example, I plan to replace five detached houses with a two-story structure containing 23-bedroom apartments? Something like that. Then do alternatives proposed in the EIRs have to adhere to this description? This necessarily does not have to be the case, of course, if the project scope can be reduced and the description has that level of verbiosity. And then does that mean that all alternatives would be a different project? And a new EIR would have to be created for those alternatives, should they be pursued by the developer? And finally, what ramifications, oh yeah, what ramifications do you have if the developers offer such an alternative? And then for this concrete example, if someone, if as an alternative, it were suggested to change to townhouses with basement-level parking, it would necessarily reduce the scope of the project, but street parking would be affected, hydro setback would be affected. And of course, that wouldn't be an objective impact, maybe. And it seems to me, though, that these kind of alternatives can have changes where the sort of impacts that have to be mitigated are different. And in some cases, the city might be more interested in having certain kinds of impacts to mitigate, maybe because it's easier, because it's cheaper. And then what I want to get at is basically, reduction of project scope and the change of mitigable categories by changing project character are also important alternatives. And then my final question, I guess, is, does SEQA adequately take into account positive environmental impacts when worrying impacts? And so, for example, if we decrease employees' distances to their office spaces by building more housing, that is in, I would say, a positive environmental impact, even though there may be negative impacts resulting out of such projects. And so I'm just wondering, how are those taken into account? Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll try to remember all of those comments. I'm going to start backwards, since I remember that one, that comment best.
Commissioner, if I would, if you would just let the public comment run, and there's items that you've heard that you think that you want staff to, to, to respond to, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll hold it till the end? Okay, so our next person is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission and City Council members. Thank you for braving all the norovirus issues, I'm sorry, coronavirus. I, I find this type of public forum extremely valuable. You all did a wonderful job, the, the speakers on EIR, et cetera, et cetera. I have been coming to public forums for the last 25 years, five years in the county, when we were in the county, my neighborhood, and then 20 years here, 15 years in this building. And I, I understood what cumulative was, because we've run into that before. But, and I believe that I attended the DRC or ERC meeting last summer, and this is good stuff. I had a biology teacher at Deansa that said, "Good stuff, good stuff. You could eat this stuff up." I think that because of what has happened at the state level with the barrage of housing bills, the ADU bills, the people of Cupertino are being forced to learn more about what they're up against. Yesterday, Scott Weiner introduced, I believe, forgive me if I have the number wrong, I'm, I think it's Senate Bill 894, I may have the wrong one, but it's a baby SB 50. And I object vehemently. I started calling senators today. Because I think that the rights of Californians are being stepped upon, treaded upon, and we need to understand our resources. I find it quite interesting that it's possible that, I think, after listening tonight and what I have read about the new bill, is that every single one of these housing bills, including the horrific ADU bills and their foot, foot setback. To me, the ADU bills kicked the can over the back fence. That was it. We have drawn our line in the sand. That we need to understand our options, and I think each one of these bills need, needs an EIR. Because they are going to have impacts and ramifications for years. Can you imagine if SB 50 had passed? The amount of litigation and information and lack of transparency or need for transparency. God forbid that this baby 50 passes in the fall, or the governor signs it, we are in for bedlam. We're in bedlam now, and I, I appreciate the fact that I live in a city that is willing to go the extra steps to inform their public. I'm a homeowner. I need to know this stuff, so that we can fight this abuse of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Leanna Crabtree.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leanna Crabtree, and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm representing myself this evening. And could I have the pitfall slide back? When I, originally, the pitfalls? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. When I originally filled out my card, I thought I was going to speak about something else, but then you brought up a lot of really good ideas. And first, just, I want to start simply and just say, the information about the noticing going to the county, but then not actually being noticed to the public here in Cupertino, I hope that there is some process that we could enact that would make sure that when something is kicked over, related to a project, it's kicked over to the county, that it is automatically shared with the public. That would be very helpful. I like that Chair Moore suggested that. I think that's a great idea. Also, with regards to the pitfalls, the incomplete description, I know we had a project not that long ago, that was, they were discussing something called form-based code. And it was this idea, if I'm remembering it correctly, where you talked about the shape of sort of the, not just the footprint, but the 3D shape of the, of the, what it would look like, but you didn't address what was in it. And it seems like this idea of form-based code is, you know, in direct conflict with having a complete description, because you don't know what you're getting, you just know kind of what the shape of it's going to be. So it would be very helpful also if we could have something in, I don't know if it's the municipal code or part of the process for creating the general plan, that talks about how you need to identify the what of a project. You know, how far it is from the street and how tall it is, these are all very important things. But you want to know the what, and you also know, you know, in terms of open space, we know we have some requirements for open space for new projects, but is the open space contiguous? I would also really like to know that. Oh, the other thing is, the idea, this whole process, I really would like to know, you know, what other, what other agencies or jurisdictions are doing regarding the process. But I know Chair Moore asked the question about, well, you could go ahead and certify an EIR, because you believe it's accurate, but you don't agree that it's good for your community, but what are the consequences of actually doing that? It was, the process was followed, everything was addressed, but the end, the process doesn't meet the needs of your community. So what is the, what are, what are the consequences if a, if a city does move forward in that fashion? Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Warren.
I too filled out my card too early, so I'm going to go what I filled it out for before. But anyway, I'm wasting my time. So, the question about if EIRs expire, and I think the answer was no. And I can tell you, in Santa Clara, at the Agilent property years ago, they were trying to resurrect an EIR for a new project. One had been approved, and they wanted to go back to the same EIR, and it was like 10 years old. And Apple was approved and being, I mean, it was like craziness, it was happening around it, and they didn't want to have the cumulative effect added. They just wanted to use this old EIR. So some residents from Cupertino and San Jose went, and ultimately, the project was denied. But this stuff happens. It, it does happen. Bad, incorrect EIRs are used for projects years in the future. So if there's a way to prevent that in our city alone, please do so. Let's see. Because there was some comment about cities having some control over SEQA in their own city, and I'm not sure where those control boundaries are, but if that could happen, that'd be great. If I'm not mistaken, if I am, I'm sort of embarrassed. But our GPA, which was really, our general plan update, was named, correct, Ben, please tell me, was titled a GPA, when it was really our general plan update. Ben, is that right? Oh, you don't have to answer me.
Go ahead and finish your statement. I'll wait for the chair.
Okay. Because in that EIR, if I'm not mistaken, there were three alternatives built into it initially, like they were predetermined alternatives. Which, when you hear talking about alternatives are supposed to make something better, less, less impacts, it's, it's confusing to use that terminology. And we ended up with some pretty nasty stuff in our general plan because of this. So I just want to know if that was even done properly, now that I'm hearing this. There were, I mean, I've been commenting on general, on EIRs and draft EIRs and notice of, whatever they're called, NOPS, for numerous times, and there's a lot of things that I just learned tonight, so thank you again for that. And thank you for whoever made this happen. Because even knowing the process and what the terms mean, doesn't mean you know the full process, and I've learned a lot. And I'm thinking back, wow, I would have done this differently, and the outcome might have been different. Anyway, there's my time.
Fifteen seconds.
That's okay, there's more than that here.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. All right, so if we could start with the questions from Johan first, with Carmen and Seth?
I believe the first question was, what level of specificity is required for the project description? It is more detailed than the speaker suggested. The project description has to describe all of the details of construction of the project. It has to describe any, any elements of the project that may result in impacts. It typically describes not only the height and size of the project and the location of it, but there's also a description of the existing setting, so what the context of the, the project would be, and all of the elements of the project. So for instance, how would the project process stormwater? Where would it get its water supply? What's the construction period for the project? How long will it last? How much traffic is it, is it going to generate? How many employees will it have? What are the hours of operation? Are there fences and signage and lights associated with the project? Pretty much any element of the project should be described. And if there are elements of the project that are associated with it but separate, so for example, I was reviewing an EIR recently for a housing project that only had one way in and out of the project, in order to have a second egress, they had to build a bridge. That bridge had to be described as part of the project, even though it might be. That bridge had to be described as part of the project, even though it might be built at a separate time. Excuse me. So it's, it's a pretty involved level of detail. The second group of comments was about alternatives. I may not have gotten all of them, but I know one question was the level of detail required in alternatives, and if the, an alternative was chosen, would a new EIR be required? The level of detail for alternatives does not have to be the same level of detail as for the proposed project, but you have to have enough detail to understand how it differs from the project and what the impacts of the proposed alternative are in comparison to the project, so that you can evaluate how the impacts of, of the alternative on the existing environment are different from the project's impacts on the existing environment. So it has to be just enough detail to, to where you can understand those changes. If the decision-making body chose an alternative to the project, presumably, all the alternatives are supposed to have lesser impacts than the project, so that the decision-making body would be approving a project that has less impacts than what has been evaluated. So there would not need to be a new environmental document.
Can he respond to that?
Can he respond?
Chair, you've already had a public comment, so the procedure for, for the public hearing is that you, you will have a public comment, and the chair as the presiding officer will decide whether to entertain certain questions or not, and then direct those questions to the staff, and that dialogue should really be between the staff and you, the commission.
Thank you. Could you finish with the, I believe there was another part of the question as well?
The last question I recall is whether SEQA considers positive impacts of projects. That is not part of SEQA. Sometimes you see benefits described in EIRs, which is acceptable as context and information, but it's not one of the things that SEQA requires or weighs into the impact analysis.
So it could be that preferential mitigations in our general plan, when we do our next general plan update, that those could be added, or it could be an, offered to city council, something that they look into, that they might want to implement as some policy if, if it can be put into the municipal code, something like that. And then, could we move on to the comments from Jennifer Griffin, and one in particular was whether the housing bills would need an EIR, and I think that's an interesting question, or what they did was say that because of the housing crisis, so perhaps there's something in that language that allowed them to bypass that need.
I believe, I can look for a citation, that state legislation is expressly exempted from SEQA, but I'll take a look.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. I actually have to go off or take my wife to the airport, so I'm sorry.
Well, thank you very much for your input, Commissioner Vaughn.
I did want to thank the, the presenters for a very informative presentation. Thank you.
So let's continue on with the, the comments from Jennifer Griffin. If you had any further additions to that, or shall we move on to the comments from Leanna Crabtree?
I'm sorry, I'm not recalling Leanna's, Ms. Crabtree's comments.
I think one of her, the comment I recall was in regard to form-based code.
Yes.
And I guess my, Carmen, you can add anything else you'd like, but my response here would be that whether or not the city adopted form-based code wouldn't impact the required analysis under SEQA. And those are two different areas.
So I have one, one offering of a, of a recent case that you might be interested. It's StopTheMillennium.com versus the City of Los Angeles. And they, in that one, the court's conclusion was the project description was not accurate, stable, and finite as required by SEQA. It might be something that, that is interesting to you. And lastly, you had the questions from Lisa, and one note that I have is, you know, is there a way to prevent using an old EIR? And if there's something that we can do, either in the development agreement or, you know, some mechanism so that that doesn't occur?
I, I think we'll take note of that, and I don't have a response for you right now, and it's, again, it's kind of outside the SEQA realm, but we'll include that in our, our list tonight.
Right. And we did have some echoing about having the notice of preparation made locally available, and, you know, earlier we had spoken about making sure that we get the, that these are just procedural issues for getting the documents to us earlier so we have more time for review. Were there any other comments that you wanted to add to address what the public had to say?
I think that doesn't.
And Ben, are we then completed with the public comments? Are we going back to the commission to make any more comments?
Yeah, I understand based on your, your questioning that the public comment has been closed, so now you can entertain further deliberation between the members on the podium on dais, or we can continue on with other items on the agenda.
So if there are any, so the public comment period is closed, are there any further comments from the commission or our council members?
I have one more question regarding the description. It seems you, from your later comment, the description is pretty detailed, including even sewage and a lot of things. So by this, you mean the description in the EIR, not the description in the notice of preparation, right? So I'm getting a little confused with that. So then the description that Chair Moore mentioned in the court case, was that referring to the description in the EIR or in the notice of preparation?
I am not an expert on StopTheMillennium.com versus the City of Los Angeles. I could read this to you, or we could take it offline. I have three pages.
We can find out later. The reason I ask that, because I have noticed that notice of preparation, sometimes it's so vague that the final alternatives may or may not even be within that scope.
That's right.
And so, and as a result, I think at that time, I was a member of the public. I felt that I was deceived, because the alternatives considered were beyond the scope that was described in the, in the NLP. And so that's how.
One, one clarification there is that the notice of preparation is produced at the very beginning of a very long process of analysis. So at that point, the project team has limited information usually about the project. They've just received the application, and they're just starting the analysis. So like I said, they've, you know, typically, you come up with concepts for alternatives. They may or may not pan out. And then as you get into the analysis and you figure out where the impact areas are, you formulate alternatives that are feasible and that may reduce the impacts. So it's a process.
Yeah, okay.
So I want to talk a little, tiny bit about the, the history of how this meeting came to be. Last year, the Environmental Review Committee agreed that we wanted to have a study session to educate the committees, particularly since we needed to make the determination after we got an initial study for whether to have a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR for a certain project. And Carmen and Seth came in and gave us a presentation there. And then my request was to have the Planning Commission have a study session also, because we need to make a recommendation on the EIR to, or a mitigated negative declaration to the city council. And I'm, you know, very excited that we have members of the city council who have attended, and also, we want to have a public record recorded so that when we have new members of the ERC and new members of the Planning Commission and city council, that there's something that they can look back on. At the...
I echo that. It was very useful to understand all the details and get clarifications on a whole bunch of things.
Yes, yes.
And through the city staff, I think a lot of the process-related questions which have come up, we're looking forward to some input from you on how to address those.
Further, when the Planning Commission goes to the Planning Commission Academy, starting last year, they not only held a, a SEQA basics, like an hour, hour and a half long seminar, they also now hold a advanced SEQA course. And I had received at that meeting, the, by Placeworks, California Environmental Quality Act booklet, which explains the process, and this is, this is like $8, and it gets updated annually. They also, for, we, at the ERC, everyone gets a copy of, of this, so we know the process. We also keep a desk copy of the 2020 Association of Environmental Professionals statutes and guidelines to go through. And also, you know, I recently went to the Association of Environmental Professionals Advanced SEQA Workshop, and this is where, you know, they went over some of the recent case laws. So there are places where we can get further educated in the public. If you're interested, you're able to do this as well. The League of California Cities Presentations that, that I described at the Planning Commission Academy, they're available online to the public, so if you just look up the Planning Commission Academy, you can then get to the same presentations which we had. So they have the SEQA basics presentation and the advanced SEQA presentation as well. And are there any further comments from the commission or the council members?
So I thank you so much for this presentation. It's really extremely informative. And, and yeah, thank you so much for initiating the process, Chair Moore. I think we have come across some ideas to improve the process. In the spirit of SEQA, which is to improve disclosure, transparency, and accountability, I'm, I hope that we will have a list of these ideas after this meeting, so we can, we may consider them. For example, any documents sent, registered at the county, we should try and notify the public in the city, and things that I jot down for the draft EIR. Not only that we need a longer lead time for the final EIR, but I think we probably need some kind of body that can review the draft EIR, not simply noticing the public and expect the public to comment on. And then I'm hoping there will be more transparency in deciding the alternatives, especially for large projects, so that there may be more engagement in the iterative process, so we come up with better alternatives to evaluate. And also enforcement of the mitigation measures, and like John mentioned, maybe assessment of the effectiveness of the earlier proposed mitigation measures to, so that maybe for the next project, we might have, we might consider different mitigations that might be more effective to resolve, to mitigate the impact. Any other things, ideas we should consider?
Well, we are going to need to look into VMT in the future, and I am concerned that there was a case, the Freont Ranch case, where they're, they need to correlate air pollution. If you've exceeded the threshold, you need to correlate that to a health impact, and that, that's the item which I believe is going to impact a density bonus law, but I'm not sure. We need our attorneys to advise us on that matter.
So like threshold of significance, right? So we understand that the city could set our own standard for threshold of significance for like air quality or other things that we are concerned about.
Well, air quality, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has the thresholds. At issue is that all that currently the EIRs are doing is showing the, you know, that the nitrous oxides have, you know, X, Y, Z health effects on people, but they're not making an actual correlation to what those health impacts are. And what I'm asserting is that those health impacts could be applied if somebody's trying to use density bonus law. There's a section in there which discusses the health impacts. So my assertion is that if you can correlate it to an actual health impact, those density bonus units might not be allowed on a certain project if it's too large. And then with regards to, you know, VMT, our language in the general plan for levels of service seems to indicate that it would perhaps expire at some point, but that's unclear, and I don't know if the city council actually wants level of service to completely, you know, no longer be looked at. So right now, until we have a threshold of significance for VMT, which I believe we're going to need a, you know, study session on, then if, if we don't have that, until the threshold of significance has been established, we still can hang on to level of service, but after, after we've established that, then it looks like levels of service will completely go away. And you don't have to have that happen. You can still look at it and know it for the different intersections if you choose to do so.
My understanding is the state law require us to consider VMT. However, they don't prohibit us from considering level of service. So we are allowed to continue to use level of service as our own city standards, right?
I would check on the language in the general plan. I was reading it over this afternoon, and it looks like it might be ending. So I would just, you know, right, have the, have our attorneys look that over, and, you know, I've sent an email about it citing the page and the policy.
Okay, that's good to know, because it was removed from the general plan in, at the end of 2014, and I brought the issue up to the city, and then the council had an amendment to put it back in, the level, level of service. It was just totally removed then, so.
We'll coordinate with the city attorney's office.
All right. And with that, I want to thank Carmen and Seth. It's a great presentation, extremely helpful to the public. Thank you. All right. And we are moving on to old business, of which we have none, new business, of which we have none. Any staff and commission reports?
I attended the mayor's meeting. I brought the mayor and the rest of the group up to date about what we did in February, and we also discussed nominations for the guest awards, and decided collectively on some of those.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Nothing on my end. I wish people a happy holly for those who are celebrating that, so thank you.
Thank you. And I already mentioned that I attended the AEP SEQA Advanced Workshop, and I was at the Planning Commission Academy last week as well. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.